Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Long Hill Township Board of Education was given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act as follows. Notice was sent to the Echo Sentinel and Daily Record on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Notices were posted on the bulletin board in the first floor entrance hall of the school district administration building, Gillette, New Jersey. Notices were filed with the township clerk and notices were mailed to all persons who have requested individual notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Foster? Mr. Grosskopf?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. McLennan?
Here.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Here.
Mrs. Case?
Here. Thank you. First on the agenda is the presentation, the SSDS results.
Yeah, this is just an informal presentation of the semi-annual student safety data system, also known as SSDS, report. We changed the table slightly to make the reasons for the suspensions clearer for this reporting period. We're very fortunate, again, this reporting period have so few incidents and nothing of a serious nature in terms of violence or vandalism. We had five suspensions at the middle school for a total of seven days. Five and a half out-of-school suspensions, one and a half in-school suspensions. No HIBs during the reporting period, which is a credit to our students and staff for ensuring an inclusive environment. And I'll just knock wood right now that that's going very well.
But what's covered in "other"? I'm looking at the chart.
Yeah. Anything that doesn't fit into the categories, yeah.
Oh.
Those stated categories. But it's really just a report on the total number of student removals for disciplinary reasons.
What would not fit in? I apologize. Because it looks like all the others would cover it, right?
Was there one that was, was it ever defined as something that's other than this?
It's specifically, there are narrow definitions about things. And vandalism is one of the things that, you know, identifies. And we had two incidents that fell into that category and then three others that aren't identified either as vandalism or violence or weapons. Thankfully, we don't have weapons.
Right, but what would be that other?
Well, let me, I'll give you an example, something like a theft.
Okay, gotcha.
That could get us into a category.
Thank you very much, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. All right, communications. I'll just turn it over to Superintendent Alexis.
Sure, sure. Yes, Mr. Estevez notified us that he decided to step down from his elected position on the board due to a change in personal circumstances, including an increase in personal and professional obligations. He realized because of that change in circumstances, he cannot devote the proper time and attention that the board and the district deserve. We have advertised the vacant position on the website and an email blast went out on Thursday notifying the community of the vacancy. We plan to interview candidates at the March seventeenth board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, board committee and liaison reports. We will start with Karen.
Okay, the Morris County Ed Services Commission, we met virtually on January eighth. The big things are, and Robin has received, the new rates for their services for this year. They've had to raise the tuition on the Central Park School. They're just about in the middle of the, I don't know, sixteen schools that they've identified, like ECLC, Abanyon, et cetera, et cetera. So they're not the most expensive nor are they least expensive. I had mentioned before that, about the attempt to purchase the Central Park School from the state. And lo and behold, it's coming to, we're getting a closing, so it will be their property. And that opens up to them the ability to provide a wider array of services because under the state control, they were restricted to just having that school there, so to speak. So they're already talking to neighboring school districts, et cetera. The next meeting will be on February twelfth and I will attend that virtually. Governance met. And we went over the RSVPs at the time. There were several that were already been received and I hope, I'm hoping they keep coming in. And we're gonna look into, or George is looking into, more general publicity outside of, I'll call it, the school community. We finalized the committee chair guidelines. I'll comment on that, something on that in the policy part. Because I'm giving that for Justin today. We discussed reorganization and onboarding new members. And, and right now it's identified the vice president as serving as the mentor. And that's gonna be an ongoing discussion about what we would do in terms of making it easier and, well, just easier for the new board member. Governance role, one of the things we talked about was checking in with the committees. We want the committees to feel like governance is really a help, you know, not just there. So for the chairs that are having experience with the new committee, you know, how is it going? Have you been able to set your meetings up? Or any other difficulties or, you know, just concerns? And we are gonna, I am gonna go through and just see how, we've gotta be, I guess, more diligent about meetings and the minutes of the meetings and the agenda items, so we're gonna see if we can't work on that. Just so that you know, or remember, in April, our board meeting will start at five-thirty. It will include, the early piece will include a half hour of ethics training delivered by Charlene. And then the other hour and a half is going to be a review of the committee goals, like we did before, or which we did last year one time. And we're doing it twice, we're gonna wait April and then we'll do it again in later on in the year. There's a new self-evaluation tool, it is still not available, so don't have any, anything to report on that, just to let you know what it is. Okay. Finance. We reviewed the responsibilities as identified on the website and agreed they were complete and okay as is. And that's something I should have brought up into governance. That's really important that the committees look at the responsibilities that are published, just to make sure that they, you're doing what they say that you should do and you're not doing something that another committee maybe should be doing. We found that out with governance, so I'm just saying you from experiences which we go through. In terms of CUSAC, you all heard and, you know, read in George's update, had a walkthrough with someone we all know, Dr. Ovtar, who is the interim county BA. It went well. And again, on February twelfth will be, I guess, the final, final meeting. And the CUSAC committee will be meeting with the reviewers first. And then they go on and do whatever they have to do, which includes getting a sampling of different documents that they can just request. There's nothing that comes ahead of time. But I guess I should note, prior to even them coming here, I don't know, a hundred or more documents were already provided them remotely for them to review, so they've gotten a lot of information already. With respect to food service, you know, things are constantly being adjusted and adapted. The biggest thing deals with free and reduced. And there were emails, texts, letters, many reminders of the parents that they have the responsibility to order the food beginning in February, February third, which is today. And after that, they will periodically check, they will not let, you know, a child go hungry. But they will not be, you know, when I say "they," we will not be ordering the food for the child. It'll be the responsibility of the guardian or the parent to do that. If there's like a, how should I say, several days in a row, they might get a reminder call or a reminder text. But it's not going to be, you know, something that they just do or out of, you know, just regularly. BNG report on things associated with Central School. Robin's gonna report on the rod grants. With respect to our favorite subject, the budget. We reviewed the budget timeline. Obviously, it's not that different from last year. There will be a board meeting for the preliminary budget on March seventeenth. And prior to that, you're gonna get a copy of the preliminary budget and a video presentation. And Robin is gonna go into, when she gives a talk, or when she gets a chance to opportunity to speak, about, let's call it, some of the changing, or I should say, the impactful items that are going to be hitting our budget and some of the things that we'll be faced with. On the agenda, you're gonna see several items for approval about, of the over the forty-four thousand limit. You're gonna see something associated with the disposition of obsolete books. And it's just important to note that the business office will be reaching out to California saucers before anything is, you know, like tossed, to see if they can use any of the materials. And right now, a school nurse will be, be present during the forced activities. The bills lists were reviewed and, I mean, like, we're talking minor, minor, something less than four dollars. And a number that was on the order number, the check number on the check didn't match the check number on the sheet that you get, the review sheet. And it just, the review sheet just had to be changed, it was minor. Otherwise, all the bills are good to go. And that's that. With respect to policy, okay, here we go. Six-one-four-seven, there were no changes. That's standards of proficiency. That with respect to class size, basically, there was some language that was changed to make it, to clarify it a little bit more. If anything, we're more restrictive because we do go from, how should I say it? More conservative class sizes in our district, so that was identified. There were cross-referenced in policy, six-one-five-six instructional planning and scheduling. There were cross-references that were not in our policy, so that was, they were removed. If we don't have the policies in our manual, we can't cross-reference them, obviously. Evaluation and selection of instructional materials, it's a mandated policy, so the header had to be changed. And the important thing there was, and this is work Melissa had done, she reviewed the statute and it specifically identified or was identifying with middle school and high school. So she, that language was further clarified in our policy. And there was also a reference to, I'll read, I'll read the statement. And like, this is mandated and it's state required. And how should I put it? Yeah, this is the way it's gotta be worded. A board of education shall include instruction on the political, economic, and social contributions of persons with disabilities and lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people in an appropriate place in the curriculum of middle school and high school students as part of the district's implementation of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Illegal references were updated. Complaints regarding instructional materials, there were no changes to that policy. Community resources, the legal references were updated. Media center library policy, no changes. Child study team had some grammar changes and legal changes, illegal reference updates. There was, for the special instructional program, six-one-seven-one, some grammar, updated legal reference and fixing some of the cross-references. Remedial instructions, six-one-seven-one, again, legal references and grammar fix policy, six-one-seven-one dot two. Talented and gifted, I believe we're gonna have to discuss again at the, we're gonna bring that up at the policy meeting. And sixty-three-hundred, the legal references were updated. And you had the new bylaw associated with roles of the committee chair for second reading. Tom pointed out two, you know, one capitalization requirement and one typo. And he had a question regarding administrators and unless I'm, you know, not understanding it. Administrators in our vernacular has basically been those of, I would call, supervisory or leadership position.
Yeah, members of the administrative leadership team.
Okay, so it's, rather, you can't identify specifics because those, how should I say it? Titles and terms can change, but, so that's what administrator, the administrators referred to in that policy, just what George said, so.
Can we, can we phrase it the way George pronounced it?
Which is what?
Administrative, I'm sorry, you were saying.
Leadership team.
Yeah, because administrator is calling out a position that's really not a position. It's not.
Administrator isn't, okay.
Administrative team.
Okay.
To me, it's a little clearer. Anyone else have a comment?
Are you gonna discuss it again in committee or Karen or?
I don't know.
It was a first reading, so it'll be there for.
Yeah, it's a second meeting.
It's a second meeting.
It was a second reading, yeah, the original was on the floor.
Right, so what would you, what would you think?
We could go back to the committee. I mean, administrative leadership team's a little bit broader because that could be other staff members. And I think this was more focused on actual administrators, someone who holds an administrative certificate.
I think that's pretty standard education language.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I don't think it's, you know.
Okay. So.
If you wanna make a motion later on, Tom, you can, but for right now.
And now, and then I just, is that it? Is that it?
It's up to you, Karen, I'm not sure.
No, no, all right, no, 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 we can, right, we can wait for a motion.
I'm not uncomfortable with it, you can leave it the way it is.
Okay, great. And then I just wanna say, this is, I didn't know where to put it, whether it's new business or what is it. I had the good fortune to work the snack table at the talent show on Friday. And it's, I love it, this is like the fifth time I did it. I mean, the kids are, they're funny when they come up to get the candy or whatever. But the big thing I wanna stress and it's happened every single time, please, thank you, may I? They don't push, they don't shove, even a halftime, you know, halftime.
That's what they call them.
At intermission, you know, they stood there, they waited, they lined, they, it's a tribute to families and to the school. I mean, that kind of thing in that pandemonium is like really special, that's all. And like I said, they're a, they're a who, they really are.
Karen has her name in the program and everything. She's a cornerstone of the talent show service, yes.
I mean, George saw me at intermission.
I did, I took a picture, I almost put it on Instagram.
Did you really?
I didn't, because I know you wouldn't like that. But I do have the pic, I do have the photo, there was a long line, Karen was very composed and handled herself beautifully.
But that's fun, fun.
Okay, other questions for Karen?
Um, the agenda, poll, number thirty-seven, it says first reading, should that say second reading?
Oh.
That's why I was thinking it was, because we have thirty-six is a first reading, thirty-seven is a first reading, which is why I was assuming they were first readings. But maybe thirty-seven.
I thought we put the bylaw on for second.
The bylaw says second reading, it was just the one you were saying, Karen, I thought they were, was that the bylaws?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I was checking, yep, thank you. We're fine then.
Okay.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, Danielle?
Okay, so we had a community relations committee meeting on February twenty-seventh. It was myself, George, Tom, and Anne, you were there briefly in the beginning. We spoke about continuing, continuing to vote for our strategic planning dates that are coming up. I know that the district keeps sending out things on every Friday. And I know that there's been many invites and letters gone out to different organizations. I think we had about thirty-nine, thirty-eight or thirty-nine RSVPs, I think, that was reported. And obviously, we're still gonna keep getting more in. We wanna keep track of the RSVPs that way, just that we, so we, we know how many people to expect, because the first one I think is gonna be in person.
It was actually like the low thirties, but.
Oh, okay.
Hopeful that it continues to go.
Yeah.
We continue to advertise it.
Yep, so, so, so far, so good. We're also looking at, just putting it out there for, for everybody, that the district climate survey will be coming out at a further date. But just keep your eyes open and your emails. And then the next meeting's gonna be for February twenty-fifth at four PM via Zoom. And then as for the PTO liaison, so Wizards are kicking off, so it's a huge thing, big, big deal, very exciting. Tickets do get sold out usually, so everybody, if you're listening, like, definitely get your tickets now. It's, it's a lot of fun. I know I'm volunteering, I'm sure you're volunteering as well.
I'm at the snack table.
Yeah. So it's, it really is a lot of fun for everybody, so I hope that they do sell out once again. But I wanna say, stress, like, definitely get your, act fast and get your tickets now. They also, the PTO is going, still doing their crock pot meals and still doing their year-round spiritware, so that's a big deal. They are also gonna be doing a really fun thing coming up. It's gonna be like a pop-up kind of assemblies, let me see here, it says, Pop Kids assemblies are coming up, which is gonna kick off more new fundraisers. So this is gonna be happening, I think, around February twenty, I think it's February twenty-fourth. And just keep your eyes and ears open, this is brand new, so I'm not too sure on what exactly to expect, other than they're gonna amp the kids up and then we gotta send out emails, I'm not really too sure, but.
Me too, sounds fun.
April twentieth, or February twenty-fourth, just note to keep your eyes open for that as well, for the, those types of assemblies. And that's it.
Okay. I don't see that meeting on the, on my calendar, so I don't know, are the meetings, are we putting them on there? Maybe that, this meeting isn't on the calendar. Community relations.
It should be on the calendar, yeah.
Yeah, check and see, and see if I'm on that. Okay, Crystal?
Nothing to report this month, the technology committee did not meet, but we are determining a meeting date for February, TBD.
Okay, sorry, Crystal, okay. Okay, Anne, I don't know, I have a problem.
I flipped to the calendar, so I have to flip, no, that's okay. I think I have it queued right here. So Student Achievement and Curriculum Committee met on January twenty-second. Still adjusting, and a new year and a new, you know, it's like, really, January twenty-second, that was last month? So we had an update on the after-school classes that will be running and that's, you know, at Millington and at Central. It's meeting once a week and it is, you know, just an opportunity for students who need skills enhancement in certain areas to be working with teachers. So that will be, I think, starting right now, it's running. There's an update on the new math program, which we will be adopting for next year. So basically, the current program, the determination is that the progress in our math has been stagnant and a change was necessary. So we are moving to a new program, we were with the Big Ideas program for our textbooks and our workbooks. We're moving to a program called Ready Math that is complimentary or works with the iReady program, which we have been utilizing in math and ELA for diagnostics the last two years. And I believe they're piloting the Ready Math in classrooms already because, oh, you're not, George? I felt like a little snippet of something, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, we've been sharing with teachers and having professional development, yeah.
I always say because it came home, my daughter said, they might be moving to a new textbook. So that is something that they'll be working on, with the purchase of the program comes professional development support for the staff and multiple training sessions for next year. And the teachers and the grade-level teams were given an opportunity to share questions in advance with Dr. Jones prior to the Ready Math team coming in to work with the teachers and speak about the program. So that, it's just an attempt to make sure that the communication with what the teachers' concerns are, switching into a new program are being addressed as they move to this program. The PD schedule for February thirteenth, it's focused on the multi-tier systems of support. We are continuing to use the Magnolia consulting to provide training in this area, looking at maximizing small group instruction in the full classroom. And there's also going to be wellness opportunities, which are voluntary for the staff during the day. We had a review of the preschool for next year. As you are aware, the recommendation from Ms. Cologne and the Special Education Department is that we move to three preschool classrooms to meet the needs of our special education population and to maintain the ratios which are necessary for the integrated classroom, preschool classroom. So that the applications for the preschool general education students have gone out. The places were selected in a very thorough random process and parents were notified of the selections. There is a waitlist if people are interested. And one of the nice things was this was done early enough for people who were not able to get a spot in the program to then seek out opportunities in other local programs. We had a discussion of a parent survey for improving student attendance. And we also talked about a book vending machine idea, which was just, you know, like possible incentives for the younger students. There was a parent information session on January twenty-second for the preschool process and classroom. The district has provided all the requested documentation for CUSAC. And that was, that was basically the meeting. And then I also attended a meeting, I just have to switch screens, for the shared services committee with the high school. Hang on. That report, okay. So the Watchland Hills Shared Services Regionalization Feasibility Study Advisory Group, that is the title, met on Thursday, January thirtieth, to receive an update from the project research team from the Rowan Regionalization Institute. The researchers shared the progress made on data collection and the next steps in scheduling interviews for superintendents, business administrators, curriculum directors, special services and faculty. They also highlighted the ongoing work in evaluating facilities, transportation, and demographic projections. Hang on one second. My screen just went very funny. All right. The group plans to communicate with the public through local media outlets and a proposed public town hall in early April. Local media, I believe, is the Echoes. The study process remains on schedule to have a preliminary draft report presented to the advisory group by May. Once the draft report has been presented, the next steps in the process will be determined. And I will just say that it's a very informative, thorough process of meetings, so I, you know, I'm pleased to represent us in that process.
Thank you. Any questions for Anne? Okay, Tom?
Nothing to report, although I do have one augmentation from your report on Sterling Street Fair. I just got notification that the Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce has put in for Sunday, April the twenty-seventh, although it needs to be approved by the township administration, but probably.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Katie?
Okay, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met, I don't have the date here, but we met, it was myself, it's Tom, Karen, no, no. Danielle, I'm so sorry, Danielle, Robin, George and Mark, our Buildings and Grounds supervisor. We went over the Buildings and Grounds Committee responsibilities and we decided to, because we have the upcoming five-year-plan meetings, we wanna kind of see what's being projected to do that and make sure that when we, when we update it, that we are in line with the new, you know, objectives that are gonna come out of that. Because they basically currently are, are more than adequate, but we wanna kind of get the feedback from the community before we make any further adjustments. We had an update on CUSAC, we had our walkthrough with the county business administrator as previously discussed. And there is a site visit also scheduled on February twelfth. Then the capital improvement projects from last year, the stage lighting has been, finally has gone through and it has been done. And then also, there was a structural investigation that happened at Central. There were some concerns of water damage and we were happy to find out that the materials in that building are safe. There's no asbestos or anything that would be concerning, that is completely safe. It was, you know, it was deemed structurally sound and also, you know, safe, so that was really good news. They also went over some of the winter break stuff, Central had some painting done and the district-wide disinfecting and sanitizing, filter changes, using those electrostatic machines because we've had a very rough winter with flu, COVID, what have you. So they really are trying hard to keep things as clean as possible. The, what else? The Millington, there's, there was some tree damage and we are going to put the roof units that were damaged, we're going to hopefully put them in line with the rod repairs this summer. And that unfortunately, we also, it was discussed, and I'm sure you'll give us a further, when we put the rod grants out for bid, again, became way over budget. And so unfortunately, we are now waiting for feedback from the, from the state to see if we can go out to bid differently because they are, you know, I think our budget was two hundred thousand dollars and they were like.
Two hundred thousand dollars over a bid.
Oh, excuse me, it was two hundred thousand dollars over the bid. So obviously, that's your, you know, we know the value of. So, obviously, that's your, you know, we know the value of the work that needs to be done, and that $200,000 over is just irresponsible, so we are working to get that done. And we also got an update, when Millington had the gas issue, turned out it was in the road, PSNG came in, it was, it was just a broken part in the pipes in the road, they dug it up, fixed it, and fortunately, it was not at a cost to us. So that was good news. And then finally, the Gaga Pit at Gillette, they decided the location for it, it's going to be on the cement area, and that way gym classes can use it, the kids can use it at recess, and all different ages can use it. So that's really exciting. And that was donated by the Ed Foundation, so that should be done in the spring. Switching over to the Long Hill Ed Foundation, let's see, on February 7th, they'll be, we're having a cookie fundraiser currently, and the orders were closed the end of last week, and the cookie pickup, the cookie set decorating sets, we picked up on February 7th in the library vestibule from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Force, spring force signups start next week, and the classes begin March 25th. There's some really cool classes, and we're really pleased that the majority of our courses are taught by Long Hill staff, as opposed to bringing in outside vendors, we like to keep it local, so that makes us really happy. And then, so the classes begin March 25th, and they run through the end of May, I think the first week in June is to cover, if there's any cancellations or anything. And we have on, on the agenda, we're asking to approve number nine, which is two grants. One is for a master class, which is really cool, it's for the Central School band students, they learned a piece this winter, and he was supposed to come in in January, but unfortunately had to be rescheduled to April, but he's coming in to offer a master class with this, with the band students, and he will provide them feedback and teach them innovative learning strategies, and it's kind of a wonderful opportunity for them to have learned a piece of music, and then to actually meet and learn from the composer. So that was a really exciting one. And then, we also, I don't have it on here, there's another item up for approval as well, and I don't, oh, it's the standing desks for Mrs. Riley's class. And that's just very basic, it's to help kids have, move around, and it's very dynamic for in the classroom. And finally, May 9th is, save the date for our color run. This was a huge, huge success last year, the kids love it. It'll be, again, at Millington, it's for all of the students in our district. The tickets, you know, the price of the tickets go towards, you know, Long Hill Ed Foundation grants. There'll be food from food trucks, there'll be a DJ, and lots of powdered dye that the kids get to throw at each other, we get to throw. It was so much fun last year, and people definitely had FOMO if they didn't get to go, and they saw pictures of the kids, you know, and parents, and volunteers-
Or just evidence of the children walking around town.
Oh, yeah, no, I ended up, you know, some of the volunteers ended up at an establishment in town, and we were covered head to toe in dye, and that was, was the top of the town when we ran into people. It's a wonderful event, I encourage everyone to go, it's, the kids had a blast, and it's a good time. So, that is all.
Thank you. Any questions for Katie? Okay, I'm just going to add, just for good measure, committee-wise, that personnel will be meeting this Thursday. And that's it for me. We will go to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. We did have a rough month with attendance, we're hopeful the flu has run its course in the Long Hill schools, and that February will get us back on course. The website has been updated with the data from January, we've been keeping that data prominent on the website and our Attendance Matters webpage, you know, throughout the year. Also, a survey went out today for parents, asking about attendance and ways, we're trying to gather as much information, as much insight as possible, so we can help support students and families in making sure they're coming to school. Not sick, but coming to school. Last Tuesday, there, we have a few highlights, actually, of activities that weren't disrupted by the flu in January, including last Tuesday, 18 Central students performed in the Regional Honors Band Concert at Watchung Hills. The group's composed of top 7th and 8th grade musicians from the four sending districts. These students spent a great deal of time rehearsing during their free periods at school with their classmates and music directors, also had dress rehearsals and other rehearsals at the high school, along with their fellow students and musical directors. So thank you to Mrs. Shipon for her extra effort in supporting this tradition. Last week, Central hosted the New Jersey School Consortium General Knowledge Competition, both our JV and varsity teams took second place. Strategic planning, as has been mentioned tonight, is approaching quickly, and I encourage all members of our school community to participate. Please help us plan by RSVP-ing and letting us know which sessions you can attend, the invitation is posted prominently on our district's homepage. Watchung Hills held its annual curriculum night for parents of the current 8th graders on Thursday night, and the following night, as mentioned, the PTO held their annual talent show, which was a huge success in the high school's Performing Arts Center. For the PTO's next fundraiser, also mentioned this evening, the Harlem Wizards will be performing at Watchung Hills on March 5th. Each school got a preview today with our visitor from the Wizards, and kids really enjoyed that. I also want to thank the LHEF for sponsoring the grants on tonight's agenda. Robin's also going to mention this, but the NJ DOE has made February Love the Bus Month to recognize school bus safety and show appreciation for the drivers, the aides, and transportation staff, and the state asks everyone to wear yellow on February 12th. The basketball seasons unfortunately came to an end in the second round of the playoffs, but each team had a very strong season. It's great to see. And now we're on to softball, baseball, and track. As a follow-up to the CUSAC equivalency waiver that was approved at the board meeting in January, early January, we submitted the formal waiver to the county. CUSAC visit, as mentioned again, tonight was, is scheduled for February 12th. We also have a resolution approving an anticipated placement of another Seeing Eye Puppy, which would take up residence in the Millington main office. We're looking forward to that. Hope it works out. Last, I want to note two retirements on the agenda. I want to thank Linda Seppi for making a difference in students' lives for the last 15 years as a middle school math teacher, will miss her. And though here, for a shorter period of time, Mrs. Cologne significantly improved our special services department and enhanced the experiences of students and families in the district. Wish them both the best in their retirements, and of course, we're going to invite all the retirees to come to the meeting in June, so that we can wish them well. And that's it for me this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing Eye Dog thing is interesting, like, I feel like I got a puppy and then told everyone not to get a puppy, because it was so difficult, but the Seeing Eye Dog seems to be like contagious, and Peter made an appearance at the talent show, and that, the kids were very excited about that.
Quite an appearance.
Yes. Okay. Physic administrators report.
Okay, so February, like we said, is Love the Bus Month. So we want to show a little love to our bus drivers, who spend their time making sure our students get to school and back safely. And we have to say, there's been huge improvement over last year, and I think we have some really nice bus drivers this year, so that's great. I thought we didn't last year, but they're really working out this year. We also want to recognize those who work with student transportation in the offices, behind the scenes, to make each day run smoothly. So I want to thank Natalia Esplat, who is our transportation coordinator, and answers a lot of our phone calls, and sends emails, and school messenger alerts. Jack Harnett, who did most of the routing, that, which the routes are really way better this year. And Amber Jimenez, who is now in the office, and she's taking all of our calls after 4:00 p.m. So thank all of them, as well as our school secretaries and our principals, who get the kids on and off the bus, and, and find lunchboxes, and all those kind of things that happen. As we said, February 12th is Wear Yellow in honor of the state. Update on the rod grants, so as Katie mentioned and Karen mentioned, the rod grants, we did go out for the second bid, they all came in over budget, about $200,000 over budget, and so you'll see on the agenda that we're rejecting the bids. The good news is, I did get a call back from the state, which is what we were waiting for in committee, and the state said, now that you have done two bids, we can now use a state contract vendor. So that's very nice. So Mark already was in the process of getting bids, they're rather quotes, they take a little bit longer to get, they also were having a supply issue in getting us numbers, but it should work to our advantage, so I'm really not too disappointed with this.
Okay.
Budget highlights, so I did put together a whole bunch of things to tell you about the budget. We met in finance, and we're talking about the budget for '25, '26, and our primary focus remains on maintaining programs while addressing rising costs. So one of the things that I want to talk about are some of the impactful items, that they tell us to anticipate our healthcare increase as between 12% and 15%. Okay, so that's a big number. Our insurance tells us to anticipate 15%. Transportation did come out that the CPI for this year is 3.57%, okay, so again, over 2%. Salaries contractually for our teachers are at 3.1%, for administrators, they're at 3.4%. And our Pritchard contract for our custodians, maintenance people, is 3.4%. So remember, the 2% that we all talk about, all of these things are big numbers in our budget, and they are all over, way over 2. Okay, not even close to 2. So, one of the things that we're trying to do within the budget, so I'm going to lay out a few things that we're trying to do, none of this is written in stone, but this at least will give you a little preview of what we're trying to put in there. We're trying to maintain all current positions, that, and add in a new pre-K teacher for the new section of pre-K, and pre-K paraprofessionals to support our growing early childhood program. We have a low enrollment bus route, and I'm thinking about talking to Mr. Styes over Watchung Hills, and seeing if we can eliminate that and move some of the children onto another bus. Now granted, this is a triple-tiered bus route, we eliminate one tier, it still is a double-tiered bus route. So it's not a huge savings, but it is a savings. Okay? The multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, Magnolia, right, and our STEAM program, we're going to fund through our federal grants, through Title I, Title II, and Title IV. And I'm still looking at funding for pay-to-play and field trips, because with the increase in the number of students that qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, this also increases our cost for children who are getting free pay-to-play for athletics, free field trips, a bunch of other things that we, we want to keep in the budget, but we have to see where that number is. For revenue considerations, we're putting in capital and maintenance reserves to support key facility projects, including upgrading HVAC, and some potential renovations, including the renovation of the middle school library. We have some security enhancements being planned for our buildings, that we can do through the emergency reserve. Okay, we have money there. We are increasing our pre-K tuition revenue, if we open up that third inclusion class, that allows us to take in about 16 more tuition-paying students, that helps offset the cost of that expense. State aid, I'm told, is expected to remain flat, but we do know that we're probably going to have reductions in transportation aid and extraordinary aid. Transportation, because there are less students that are special needs riding our buses, and extraordinary aid, because we have less out-of-district placements, so well, that's good for us for revenue. It doesn't give us the money back for extraordinary aid. The district has healthcare adjustments available, along with band cap from prior years. Band cap allows the district to exceed the standard tax levy when necessary, as permitted by state regulations. Given the financial pressures we face, we may need to utilize these adjustments, and many neighboring districts, I've checked with all of Morris County, as well as Greenbrook, Warren, Berkeley Heights, New Providence, Chatham, surrounding ones, to see what they anticipate doing. Almost all anticipate going over 2%. Next steps, we're having budget discussions, are going to continue with the finance committee. We have meetings on February 26th to March 5th. The preliminary budget will be presented for board consideration on March 17th, and board members will receive a copy of the budget in advance, along with a copy, an accompanying video presentation. Once you watch the video presentation, you have to get a copy of the budget, I ask that you please. Any questions, give me a call, if you want to come sit with me, I'd be happy to sit with you. Hopefully, we'll come up with a really good, strong budget that will lead us into the future years. But with, with all this going up, the other one that I am a little bit concerned about, all of our suppliers are telling us that supplies are going up 6% to 8%, and that was before they announced any tariffs.
It's going to be murder.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be murder.
Yeah, are there any questions?
What for ages?
Are we getting any feedback about, because of the tariffs, potential tariffs, I should say, that some of the construction costs could be affected, and things like that? Because some of the things-
Yeah, I'm not getting any feedback. I am concerned about supply costs, I'm concerned about our gasoline costs, our energy costs, yeah. Yeah.
If you look at what the news was saying today, Mexico currently applies a tariff to us, and what has happened by the president's actions, is they've agreed to remove tariffs on goods sold into this country, so anything coming from Mexico will be actually cheaper if the tariffs remain off on both sides. And I think you might expect the same thing out of Canada, and some of your expenses that you're expecting to go up, might not.
May not.
Which would be fantastic.
It's all the future, we don't know.
Yeah, I just, I ran home in between that, just to listen to the news on that, I thought that was going to be for one month, and then after a month, they were going to-
It's a negotiation period.
Yeah, so we'll see.
All right, just-
Yeah.
Political. The tariffs for Canada were announced, they're formalized, they're formalized, lumber, fruit, vegetables, cars, you name it, they got it.
So we'll see, we'll see.
It's a big we'll see.
It was just said by Trudeau that it was going to be held off for a year.
I just, whatever it is, it's something good.
This will be-
It's something follow.
Breaking news quite often.
Yeah, we have an eye on it.
Yes, yep. Okay. So, any other questions for Robin? Okay. Any comments from the public on agenda items? Okay. All right, let's go to resolutions. Karen, will you move in the minutes, item number one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay. Danielle, will you move in financials, numbers 2 through 17?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes, abstained from 9.
Sorry. Okay, Mrs. McLennan?
Yes, abstained from 8, 9, and 16, please.
Ms. Nyquist?
Excuse me, yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Chris, will you move in personnel items, number 18 through 33?
So moved.
Second.
Pick your poison, Danielle and Anne.
That was difficult.
Okay, any questions?
I just want to acknowledge Jerry leaving, she, she definitely, as a parent with three children that have IEPs, she, her, you know, her presence has definitely been felt, and for the better, and I, we will miss her, and appreciate all the hard work she's made.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Tom, will you move in policy items, number 36 to 38?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Katie, will you move in other items, number 39 to 43?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Katie, will you move in other items, number 39 to 43?
So moved.[1740.23]
Second.
Any questions?
I just have a question. You know, I don't have a child at the school, so I don't know. The Art to Remember fundraiser, what is, that sounds so unique. What is, what is that? Does anybody know?
Basically, the art projects that they do in art class. You can, you can get it on a mug, you can get a blanket.
It's a great way to spend money on grandma and grandpa.
Okay. Nice. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
It's Mother's Day and Father's Day gifts for my parents.
Okay. Great. All right.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. All right. Items for discussion, any unfinished business?
Well, I, I guess this would come under unfinished business. It's again, it's something I should have wrote up in governance. Guys, it's really important you get the transition reports in. I know. I'm saying they saw. But you do it once and then after that, there's only like a little section you have to update or, or the person that follows you will update. And I think you have to, like, think about it. You're fortunate if you are the, you know, have served on the committee or are a chair of the committee again, but somebody coming in brandy-dandy new and not knowing, you know, where, where they can start or what they should be doing. It's, it's a great aid and it, it really would be, it really is very, very important. It really is.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? New business?
I have some.
Okay.
In a committee discussion held, it was thought that a board member should not be allowed to donate an item of any cost to the district and that it wouldn't look good. My question is, do we think that that should be true? Should board members be allowed to donate of their own volition to the detriment of the district, one way or another? And if the answer is no, and no offense is meant by this, should a board member be in charge of allocating a nonprofit's contributions to the district? It seemed to be not working hand and hand.
I'm not on the committee that.
You're not for it.
I, I am the president of the Long Hill Ed Foundation. We have a committee that is the Grants Committee and they are the ones who approve the grants. So it is directly done that way, so to avoid the look of impropriety.
This is not a person, I'm just looking.
Oh, not in any way, but I just wanted to make that clear because that was a discussion amongst ourselves in the Ed Foundation and it was, it was felt that for that specific reason for, for, to look above board to the community, it would, I would remove myself from that to ensure that it's fair and safe and legal.
It sounds like a question for New Jersey school boards. We could follow up and ask. I don't know offhand about an individual member making a donation, but I do know from trainings that we've had recently with Charlene Peterson that the New Jersey school boards and then the, the group that makes judgments about what we, as board members, are and are not able to do. I have determined that board members may sit on the foundation boards and may sit on the PTO, like you could be a PTO executive board member. The, the caveat with that is when you're going in and out of the school, you know, there's communication with guidelines. You know, I know, no one here is a PTO president, so it's okay. But if there were to be, you'd have to communicate with the superintendent regarding that, you know, and so on.